Thank you. Item 16, it's Report 245 of the Assistant Chief Executive and City Engineer. It's the quarterly report of the Active Travel Programme Office, September 2022. Could I get a proposer and a secander, please? councillor O'Malley and councillor Lacy, thank you.
Okay, if you can raise your hands, I'll list who wants to speak. You will get 90 seconds. Okay, you have 90 seconds. We're going to start with councillor Stocker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I start by saying in relation to the Clontarf to city centre cycleway, which is now very much underway, that I want to commend the staff working on that and the team working on it. We have a consultative committee on that and I found it excellent to work with, the people kind of chairing and managing that consultative committee and indeed the contractor who attends the consultative committee are excellent in terms of their responses. And as far as I can see, the project is moving apace, so that is really, really great news. I just wanted to follow up. I know a few years ago, maybe a year ago, two at this stage, we were given a list of nine upcoming kind of cycle routes for the north central area. I see some of them listed under the interim travel and whatnot in the in the report, but I don't see others. So I see, say, Kulock to Clontarf, but I'm just wondering what the story is with the Edges Corner through Summer Hill into town, which I think is an absolutely vital route that will make a big difference to people. And similarly, the Finglis to Collester route, which I think would be great to see movement on. If we could just get an update on those, please, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Cooney.
Yeah, I suppose I just, yeah, just welcoming the the report and seeing so much on it here. And I suppose I wish them all the best for their their launch next, well, on the 14th. And I hope councillors can attend for that for the Active Transport Group. I'm particularly looking at this now, the East Coast Trail. Delighted to see that and the connectivity that that's going to happen along the Alfieburn Road to the North Wall Key, including, you know, connecting with the schools and Jolies National Schools, the residential, you know, all this that's happening here. So I'm glad to see that's, you know, along along the way because it was very much needed. I would like to see some more sort of, I suppose, support for school, like for our safe routes to school and our connecting with the schools and that we're working together. I just feel like there's just not enough staff working in that area and, you know, and well done to Antonia to be, you know, whatever she's gone on to, you know, other things, but she'd be very missed. And I just think we need more people working in that area of the school mobility and the active school mobility. And I would like to see that we would also recruit staff and that. I'm delighted to see the multidisciplinary team, that you have people on landscaping. It's just the sort of thing that, you know, we welcome. And this is going to be transformative of our city, not only for cycling, but letting in green and sods and swathes and cleaner air. And it's going to be probably, you know, extremely transformative for our city. And it'll just look like a totally different place in five years' time. So wish you the best of luck with it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Heaney.
Gormaagth Ardver. I did have a brief conversation with Andy Walsh, the Director of the Active Travel Programme, at the beginning of the meeting in relation to pedestrian safety along the Clontarf to city centre cycle track. As you're walking from the Hoth Road and you cross the main road over to the side where Fairview Park is, you're a pedestrian and you're walking along the footpath, so to speak, or what was the footpath. There's arrows and there's an orange sign telling you to walk this particular route. And when you get to the particular route, you can only cross the main, back over the main road. So you've crossed the main road to get to the side you want to be on, you walk a short distance and you're directed back across the road. That's the only way you can get your bus. So you have to go back across the road, walk the far side of the road, it's a very wide road, you're in a hurry to get to wherever you want to go. And then you have to come back across the pedestrian bridge in Fairview to get to a really kind of a treacherous, in my experience, bust, temporary bus stop. There is, there's somebody, I mean, the guys who are working on site are very helpful and they will direct pedestrians back into the park. But once you get into the park, the pathway is directing you to walk into the grass. It's very unclear. It needs a little bit of attention, Lord Mayor.
Okay.
The other issue is I'm disappointed that there isn't mention on the list of the Finglis to Collester cycleway, and I'd like an update on that. And last but not least, are we are we on schedule in terms of the works on the Clontarf to city centre cycleway?
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Horner.
Thanks very much. And yeah, firstly, just say thanks again for all the work that has been done in this area. And it is really encouraging to see all the projects that are set out and a timeline for them. Just, I guess, there's a few things, I'm really looking forward to the launch of the full Active Travel Programme, obviously coming up this month, and hoping to get a few more details at that point regarding the timetable, the prioritisation, the process regarding consultation and how that'll be differentiated between maybe the interim schemes and the permanent schemes, which I think we're still sort of awaiting some of the details on. I think there is still a lot of confusion as to the distinction between the what falls into the responsibility of the traffic and transport team and the Active Travel team. And I think it is one of the reasons why we really need this report to cover both, so that we can kind of get a better sense of the full scope of what is happening in the Active Travel space, in the sustainable transport space under the city council, and get a clearer sense of how we can delineate between what where that work has been placed within the teams. I guess also just to mention the, one of the things that came out of the Walk 21 Conference, which was on last week, before, in TU Dublin, was, I think, just the importance of having an emphasis on pedestrian spaces and pedestrian infrastructure as well. And I think a lot of these projects are cycling projects and I would really, really love to see a little bit more emphasis as well going into walking. So big walking infrastructure projects may look like, whether it's footpath maintenance schedules, which I'd like to see more details on at some point, whether that's pedestrianisation projects, whether that's upgrading, improving, rolling out new pedestrian infrastructure as well. And I think that currently we just don't have enough emphasis on that in the programme.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor James Gaggen.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much for the report. Just at the outset, just to commend Andy and his team for all the work that's been done to get it to date, both councillor Lacy and myself and councillor Moore sit on the Dodder Greenway Committee and we had a meeting there recently enough, which the previous one was a bit more contentious from the Dublin City Council side. And an awful lot of progress has been made, at least on paper, on delivering that at a much more rapid pace, so that it's not something we're just talking about. It's actually going to be something that we deliver. So, look, I look forward to working with Andy and his team to see that delivered. I appreciate it's going to be on an interim basis a lot of the ways along the way, but I look forward to seeing that being delivered. And I do think in a lot of the interim schemes, whatever processes you're adopting, they are working. And I think this is the way to deliver rapid infrastructure in this city in a consultative manner, the way the way you're currently doing it. And I hope to see more of it. And just in that vein, I saw that the Clonski to city centre is going to go out to public consultation at the end of the fourth quarter. Just wondering if you have any, have you got an actual date on when that's going to go to public consultation, how long the consultation might run? But thanks again to all your team, thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Keith Connolly.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A quick query around the use of section 48 compared to apartheid. And I do agree, most of these projects are very, very fable, but there are some very large ones. For example, we received a presentation on the Rathout Road, the Cap Road, at last month's area committee, massive project, over four kilometres in length. A number of very serious concerns are made by myself and indeed other councillor colleagues, which I found very genuine. And I came away from the meeting feeling like it was a done deal and the consultations there for the sake of ticking a box and there's no statutory consultations for members of the public to get involved with. I know there are major projects there, you know, like yourself, Lord Mayor, the Foyburn Junction and Finglis Village, the Finglis Roundabout schemes, that there has to be a proper level of consultation around. And I hope I hope it does take place, but the section 48 seems to be used so much now. I also shared the concerns of my colleague, councillor Deirdre Heaney, in relation to the Finglis to Collester's not mentioned here, and also councillor Horner in relation to what actually constitutes a product on this active travel. What is distinguishing between the traffic and transport, because it's very hard to tell the two? And so if the manager can respond to those queries, thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pidgen.
Sorry about that, thank you. Yeah, again, like others have said, I think it's great to see all the stuff in the in the report. I think it's brilliant. It's going to change the city for the better. One thing I've noticed in a few projects, most recently in one in the Clamaneum to Thomas Street thing, which was launched today and looks very positive, is we're doing very wide car lanes. And I was just wondering why and what the basis of that is. So, for example, I think this is standard across a few of them, we're doing 3.6 metres for a single lane, car lane, of traffic in an area, which should be, I think, a 30k speed limit. Donnery Up Down and Limerick are two examples that were put to me of councils who are doing about three metres for cars. So we're giving an extra kind of 0.6 of a metre space for cars. Now, that's fine if there's the space for us, but in a lot of cases, beside them, we're putting in really, really tight one metre bike lanes. And now, obviously, designs will differ from place to place, but I'm just curious, what's the basis for the width of those car lanes that we're putting in there? And why are they so wide? Because I know from my own road here or from other roads that in a lot of cases, you don't need that level of space unless you're, you know, going at motorway level speeds. And it tends to squeeze cyclists and walkers. So, simple question, yes, is why are we doing 3.6 metres for every car lane? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Terence Flanagan.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. Just to thank the director there and the staff and all the great work being done in the city, as was said by other councillors. Just Clontarf to the city centre, that project, just wondering, is that on time and on budget? And just to ask what feedback has been received from the public generally on that scheme, just either good, bad or indifferent in relation to Bellmain, Main Street and Bellmain Avenue? And there's quite a lot of disruption there presently for local residents and for businesses. Now, I was down there recently, it seems to be a huge, like it is a huge project that's happening down there. But I'm just wondering, in relation to projects generally, could we do more piecemeal rather than doing the full length of the project, because it is causing an issue, a huge issue there with parking? But is that on time and on budget as well? It's just my questions about that project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Tara DC.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And, look, I welcome this report, like my colleagues and all the work that's gone behind it. I know some of this was reported at our local area committee meeting and a lot of councillors have talked very positively about the school mobility pieces and the safer routes to school, et cetera. And I did, I mentioned this at the local area committee meeting around the amount of parents groups and voluntary groups that are already and have been over the last number of years, looking at this as an issue. And that level and that need for real, I suppose, genuine consultation, and I'm thinking about the Dublin 12 Bike Bus Network, for example, they've been doing all this groundwork for the last number of years. And I did stipulate at that meeting what level of engagement had happened. And I know I had spoken to one of the people behind that project a couple of weeks ago and they hadn't had any engagement from yourselves. So I was just wondering if that group specifically can be listed for the Kimmage Rath Mines area in terms of their level of experience and expertise to engage with them sooner rather than later, if that was possible. So, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Moira Devine.
Gormaagth Ardver. Just to welcome the long anticipated cycle route, pedestrian route from Sawbridge to Thomas Street that was just published today for the public to get involved. I would imagine there will be lots of interest in this, there's lots of active groups in the area wondering how to improve that linear park and how to provide green spaces for leisure, given that the National Children's Hospital has smothered the area with its construction, the necessary construction, but the area has been smothered in concrete and dust for the last number of years and will continue so to the future. But just to welcome it, and I would imagine there'll be a lot of engagement from the public on this. Gormaagth.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patricia Moreau.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks for the report. At a local area meeting a couple of months ago, when the cycle lanes on Griffith Avenue were being discussed, there was a few comments made from councillors about the fact that a lot of the secondary school children attending schools off Griffith Avenue still persist in cycling a couple of rest along the footpath and complaints from elderly pedestrian users about that. And I suggested at the time that the office engage with, come September, engage with schools in the area and maybe give a presentation to young people on the need and the reason why they should use our cycle lanes that have been provided for them. And I just wondered, has this been done? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Niamh O'Malley.
Gormaagth Ardver. And like other speakers, I want to thank Andy and his team for building the momentum around these projects. It seems to be going faster and faster and building up a head of steam, which is great. I see the Clontarf to city centre as a bit of a flagship project for that entire team. As councillor Stocker has mentioned, we have a government set up there with a really good consultative group, which was actually hard to get people participating in at the very start of all of this some years ago. And now there's great interest, which is really great to see and great participation by everybody. I want to give Eamon Ryan a mention, a positive shout out here, because I think there's been a huge sea change in terms of availability of resources to the city council capital for these projects in the last few years. And I give Eamon Ryan credit for that. Many don't, he gets a lot of stick, so I think he has to be complimented there. In relation to Clontarf, Active Travel are also getting involved in resolving that little issue in front of the Clontarf Baths, the conflict between cyclists, pedestrians and others. And so it just shows, I think Active Travel as a unit aren't afraid to get stuck in to issues like that. There has been very good communication, in my view, with councillors around all the projects, and I would ask that that continue, bringing presentations to area committee, to local councillors, getting their feedback, getting them bought into projects. Just to want to mention, and it comes to something Janet Horner said there, in relation to things like the neighbourhood traffic schemes, there is a neighbourhood scheme meant to be in the pipeline for Merino, and there's one we have prioritised or looked for one for Collester. There is a bit of a question as to where are these falling, who's responsible for these? I think they should all be tied up together. So if, you know, you know, Merino as an example, this now is the time to be doing that, linking it up, tying it in with the work of the cycleways. Same for Collester, there'll be cycleways passing, new cycleways passing nearby up and down the Hoth Road, over and back on Collins Avenue. We need to tie all that together and get those those neighbourhood schemes tied in. So I'm just interested to hear, Ardver, where we're going to hear about those and how it's all going to join in together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Anne Feeney.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. And thanks very much, John and Andy, for the the report and the momentum, as was mentioned, which is great. Just a couple of questions. There's, I know it's in the very early stages of design, the Clamaneum to Balls Bridge route, but just if there was some indicative timeline of when, you know, that might be going to be progressed or consultation might start, particularly in relation to within my own area, Clareville, Larkfield and Kennelworth Park. And I was just wondering, given that, you know, there's only so much that can be done, you know, in the short term in relation to some of these cycle lanes, is there any thinking or lessons to be learned from other cities in relation to, let's say, main roads like Turnier Road West, where they're narrow and you can't implement a cycle lane? But is there, in terms of giving preference to cyclists or to slowing down traffic more or whatever? And also in relation to areas where cycle lanes are timed at the moment so that they're open to parking in the evenings or whatever, and cyclists have to swerve out? Just wondering, is there any innovative thinking around how we might address some of those interim issues? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Anthony Conhan.
Thanks, Chair. Just like to raise an issue that was brought up there by my colleague councillor Keith Connolly, and it's the section of road in Finglis that's been a bugbear to my end probably since I come on to the council. To the best of my knowledge, it's the only section of road that does, has no pedestrian facilities or cycle path. It's a couple of hundred metres long and we're going to be doing from Rathout Road up to Cap Road, four kilometres of works, and we're omitting that section of road, something that's been raised by numerous councillors various times. And as I said, there's no pedestrian facilities or cycle facilities there. Now, you're going to do probably 3.8 kilometres where there is facilities and you're leaving that out. We were told that it, first off, there was funding provided for this previously and then it was took off and put elsewhere. We've been calling for this to be done for several years now. This interim measure is going to bypass that section of road and we've been told it'll be addressed when there's a more permanent plan put in place, but we can't get a date when that permanent plan is. So just ask the manager to reconsider that. It's a section of road that I've walked, cycled and drove down myself. It's a danger, there's young lads walk up that road going to school, there's women that bring their kids to facilities, there's traveller accommodation on Dunceane Lane that they can't actually get off that lane without walking on the road. And I think it's a hazard to the health to the communities there. And I think we need to reconsider that, bypassing that and continue, complete the whole road and not leave that section of road out. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dermot Lacy.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'll be quick, I too attended the meeting with councillor Gaggen in relation to Dodder Greenway, and I really am delighted that it has got a push. It slowed down, don't know where it was going. So thank you, Andy and the rest of the team for that. I really look forward to seeing this happening. Secondly, I agree with councillor O'Malley. I too would like to be nice to minister Eamon Ryan occasionally, so I endorse the comments that councillor Murray made. On the Strand Road manager, one of the big issues in relation to the cycleway was people's concern about where the displaced traffic would go. And, you know, I'm not an expert in that, but it was a concern. We do have an opportunity now, though, to monitor that because of the Irish Water Works closing Strand Road. And I would suggest to you that you might take this opportunity to have a study during this period, so we can actually in real time and in real situation identify where that displaced traffic go. It might help people in the future. And the last question, just, it's in relation to the ad I just see in today's newspaper from the National Transportation Authority, public consultation on draft network proposal for Cycle Connect. I just want, I mean, apart from the fact that I previously said, and I say it again, I don't know why we have a National Transportation Authority telling us what to do in Dublin, but that's a separate argument, I really resent it, to be honest with you. But what role will we have in Dublin in terms of inputting into that plan? And what role will we have as councillors in inputting into that particular plan? But I do genuinely commend you on all the work that's been undertaken to date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Carolyn Moore.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And, yeah, I just wanted to come in quickly just to pick up on something that councillor DC said, and it's just around that idea of community consultation. Now, I know that on all of these interim routes, public consultation will happen at what the Active Travel Office has deemed to be the appropriate stage in the development of the design, but I kind of wonder if that's not putting the cart before the horse a little bit, not to link in with communities earlier, identify patterns of use, identify where people actually want to get to in the community and what those natural existing desire lines are that they could follow more closely. The kind of patterns of travel that people are already using within the community make it safer and more accessible for other people to use those patterns as well and build the kind of support that way. From my perspective, I think it just might help to iron out sort of future issues or conflicts at a stage in the process where they can be very easily resolved. Just on the Kimmage Road to, or the Kimmage Road West to Clocker Road route, for example, a significant part of that goes down Stanaway Road, which is a very, very traffic-logged road, not necessarily got a lot of width on it. It's going to be, it's proposed at this stage to be an advisory cycle lane and that car is just littered with with cars parked on the footpath. So I just see real problems there when there's a more obvious alternative available. And I would love to hear just from the manager on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hazel Chu.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Manager, just in relation to my colleague councillor Lacy's mentions on Strand Road, I know you and myself spoke about traffic measures and in relation to data and the traffic count on it. I guess to that point of subsidiary roads, that we can take those into account as well, but not just for a given period, because it's usually year-round data that's required if this is going to be a longer project from Irish Water. And I guess also offering the solutions of what the route would look like as well if we were to implement the Strand Road cycle route post the Irish Water. And a proper consultation of the area as well, because I know how divisive the matter gets. And hopefully the other councillors can then support evidence that is given that it could work. Thank you.
Councillor, did you finish or?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councillor Mary Freehill is the last speaker now, and then we'll have a response from the manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And I, like others, am delighted to see that we're progressing along on this. Like some of the other speakers, I too am concerned that there is actually, that we have sufficient consultation locally, because, you know, people are concerned. I have been contacted by people on Stanaway Road and they're very concerned. I think that it's important that there is consultation with the council and the NTA to give them the help that they actually need to sort out the situation for them. And I just want to add, and I don't know if this is the right place to say this, but, you know, we all salute the minister for the resources that he has made available. Given that our focus is cycling and walking, I think it's important to speak for the walkers as well. And what I am primarily concerned about is safety for, as I am now joining the walking wounded of the city, I am very aware of how people fall very regularly if they're not as steady on their feet as they might have been when they were younger. And they need that. And I have been trying to get some funding, extra funding, because the funding has actually been dropping for that in the city over the last couple of years. So I'm just really putting down a marker that we do have to make sure that our footpaths are maintained properly. And we need a much higher standard. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to ask the manager to come in. If he, I'm going to give him 10 minutes to respond. And if that's not sufficient, then he'll get back directly to individuals with a response. Okay, thank you.
Thanks indeed, Lord Mayor. So a couple of these questions, I'll refer to John Flanagan and others relating to traffic in particular, in general, to Brendan O'Brien, who I believe is on the line as well. So councillor Stocker, thanks very much for your kind comments. The project is progressing. It's on schedule. In fact, we're confident that it might still come in a month or two ahead of schedule, but we can't guarantee anything at the moment. But it is, the Clontarf to city centre scheme that is, is on schedule. You were asking about the various routes that were maybe flagged a while back, including through Edges Corner and that. At our launch again, we were just fine tuning the detail and some of the smaller details within the, within the overall network. And we'll conclude and produce those for the launch on Friday week. And if there's any information in the meantime, I'll circulate it as well. The question from councillor Cooney relating safer routes to school, et cetera, I'll refer that one to Brendan O'Brien. Councillor Heaney, again, we'll bring that particular question you had in relation to the concerns and the safety concerns with the arrows and signs and that, very quickly get on that in the morning and come back to you. Again, the question on Finglis to Collester, we'll have the full programme outlined later next week, so we'd be pleased that there'd be something positive in there in that regard. I just want you to wait until it's actually confirmed finally one more time. And again, the C2CC programme is on schedule. I refer councillor Horner's question to John Flanagan, the role of traffic versus active travel. Councillor James Gaggen, thanks again for your kind comments and the, in relation to the interim scheme on the Dodder. And for sure, the Clonski to city centre this quarter, but I haven't just got the exact date yet, but again, over the next few days, we're tightening all those details. And I'll come back to you very quickly on that. We have councillor Keith Connolly. The, well, yes, I'm going to refer that one to John, just in relation to the statutory versus non statutory. Councillor Pidgen, again, the detail relating to the clearance, I refer that one to you, John, as well. There was a question from councillor Tara DC, Kimmage to Rath Mines. Again, the precise detail will be presented shortly on that particular programme as well. And thanks councillor Maura Devine. I'll refer councillor Patricia Rose's question on Griffith Avenue relating to the current practice on footpaths of cycling. That may be to Brendan O'Brien, who has been heretofore delivering that particular programme. Councillor Niamh O'Murray, thanks councillor. And again, the neighbourhood and traffic schemes question, I'll refer that to Brendan O'Brien. I'll get more detail. Councillor Anne Feeney, again, like the other questions on those particular programmes, we'll circulate all that information during and after the launch as well, where we'll have the official documentation. Councillor Anthony Conahan, the Rathout Road, we're working on providing as much continuity as possible. I suppose we pulled this one out of the ether a couple of months ago. And we're actually, we feel we're making quite good progress in comparison to where we were three, four months ago. So, but I appreciate your concerns. And we've listened to the recent area committee as well, and we'll take that into account. And we'll be coming back with more detail on the precise plans that are going to help to create more safe scenarios in that particular area. Councillor Lacey's questions on Strand Road to John Flanagan. Councillor Caroline Moore. I suppose you were asking about, you know, how do we determine the various alternative routes and interim routes and that? I suppose this is all already been well researched. And, you know, evidence has determined the network, the strategic network in which we're all basing our programme on within Dublin City Council and indeed beyond for the other local authorities. It's based on need, it's based on the greatest number of people in the greatest number of directions. Taking into account some of the many constraints that are often in a densely populated city like this. So we feel that in general, it's going to be the, the programme, of course, when delivered, will result in overnight 5% of the people being within 400 metres of this particular network. So the proliferation and the perme, it's really kind of seeping right into all communities. Councillor Hazel Chu's question on Strand Road to John Flanagan. And councillor Mary Freehill, yeah, just in terms of the use and the focus on walking and that. Of course, that's a big part of our new network and our kind of, our new approach to not just cycling, but to walking. And indeed, those that use wheelchairs and people with sight impairments, visually impaired. We have to focus on them. And John will give you a bit more news on the greater, the greater moving of the funding towards that particular element of the programme as well. So I think I've hopefully answered. If there's anything, by all means, come back to me directly as well.
Lord Mayor, I just got through some of the questions that was just referred to me, just in relation to councillor Horner's question. And I think also councillor Murray. Really, in order really to try and build the momentum within the project of the cycleway network, it was necessary really to separate it away from the normal operations work of traffic and really concentrate the resources on, fully on the cycleway network itself. And because of the funding that's actually been put in there on a yearly basis now. And, you know, we needed to build up that staff resource. And I suppose to give them a definition of work that they needed to concentrate on. And I think you can see that momentum building up at the moment. The Active Travel Programme Office will be dealing with the cycleway network primarily entirely by itself. But really, the other traffic, transportation elements of work are dealt with the current traffic department itself. What we'll do the next time when we report, we'll give the report in two parts. We'll give the Active Travel Programme report and we'll give the major projects within the traffic area as a separate part to that project, which might give you a better idea of how the work is actually split. I know councillor Murray had a question on the neighbourhood schemes, which is still remaining within the traffic area. And Brendan might just come back to that and just explain the progress on that, particularly in the Marino, the Marino area. Councillor Pidgen was just asking about the lane widths. It really depends on the design, you know, of the actual route itself, the volumes of traffic, the type of traffic that's on it. And that really would dictate the type of lane width. The type of standard lane widths are generally about 3.65, 3.7, 3.75 metres width. And that's if it has more, say, bus traffic, heavier type traffics, because they're actually wider vehicles. But look, we can actually take that point on board. It would be better to try and reduce the lane widths down. It does have the effect of reducing speeds as well. So it's just, it's part of the whole design in itself. Strand Road, I take the point that councillor Lacey has made and councillor Shew. It's something that we can certainly look at, you know, the traffic gathering, traffic data there. That was part of the Irish Water Works on Strand Road and we can monitor that. Councillor Freehill, just to add to councillor Freehill's point there. We are looking at, I suppose, two schemes now that we can actually put an estimate together, where we can actually pick a length of footpath within each village area, both north side and south side, that we can put an estimate in for budgetary terms. If Brendan could maybe come in on some of the traffic items.
Yeah, thanks, John. Thanks, Lord Mayor. I suppose a couple of items, safe routes to school, school zones. I suppose for clarity, that stays within the traffic department. And councillor Cooney mentioned Tony Martin, who used to head it up, who's left in public service. Unfortunately, we used to have three members of staff working on school zones. We now have one. Neve, who's completely overloaded at the moment. So we're hoping to get some additional staff back into this really, really important area. And trying to make some progress. We have, though, for some of the safe routes to schools and some of the school zones, we have got some of our city centre projects, people actually transferred over to start working on those as well. So we're trying to pick up the slack due to some staff shortages there. Neighbourhood schemes, neighbourhood schemes, you know, we have a number of them that are being worked on around the city. We obviously had intervened, the neighbourhood people had intervened in Marino, in Haverty Road to coincide with the works there. We've had Belmont Avenue in trial phase at the moment. There's working on Chapel Isid and a number of other places as well. And I suppose from our point of view, we're trying to incorporate, we're trying to wrap up the safe routes to school, school zones and neighbourhood schemes. Because what we're looking at, I suppose, is, you know, how do we get people to and from school, to and from these various different places? But also, you know, both bus connects and the cycle network tend to be on the more major roads. And it leaves the neighbourhoods still needing links and still needing a lot of work. So that's where we're, where we're trying to do that. Regarding Griffith Avenue and the issue of some of the kids cycling in school, there has been engagement with the various different schools. Neve has been leading that. I'll check with her to see whether she's reached all the schools or not. But there has been ongoing consultation with the various schools there as the works there along Griffith Avenue can continue on to Baligal on one side and to Malahide Road. Once the resurfacing is complete from the Cairns Home Works, that cycle track will be linking into the Malahide Road. So I'll check with that particular item though with the schools. Just one item regarding the Strand Road, as part of the whole Strand Road trial, we put in a lot of monitoring around the area. We put in air quality monitors. We put in new sensors around various different locations, around the whole sand event area and all the major junctions. And so we will be looking at this diversion quite carefully. And we'll be able to give data on what, what way the traffic is actually moving in the area. So that is something that we will be doing. So thanks, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. councillor Claire Brown, quickly, is a point of information.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, it's okay. It can wait. I'll email them directly. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. We're going to move on to the next item.